Everyone to try to find a seat. I feel like I need a wine glass.
Who needs a gavel instead of a wine glass?
Right. Weapon signs. Do I use a gavel on my screen? I'm going to ask everyone to try to find a seat. We're going to get started in a couple minutes. We want to...
This is such a cool crowd.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
It's pretty amazing.
Like greatest hits.
Right. Okay. Please take a seat so we can get going. Ice cream awaits. We ready? Sorry, should we just do it? Okay. I am going to call to order today our city council regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 1st. This is our 6:00 PM special meeting on Arinda's 40th anniversary. Madam Clerk, Councilmember G here, Councilmember Hoxey here, Councilmember Riley here, Vice Mayor Iverson here, and Mayor Mulcany here. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Distinguished guests and fellow residents of Arinda, welcome to our special meeting of the Arinda City Council, which is being held exactly 44 years after the city of Arinda was incorporated. If anyone does need an assisted listening device, they are in the back of the room. So please feel free to get up and get one. Today marks a historic moment for our beloved community. It is with great pride and humility that as Mayor of the city of Arinda, I have the honor to recognize this important event and the city's founders. The incorporation of the city on July 1st, 1985 was a celebration of a collective vision, determination, and unwavering commitment to shaping the future of Arinda. Today, we honor and express deep gratitude to the city's founders and especially to the inaugural city council members, many of whom some... I'm going to announce a few folks and I will, I will ask at the end that if I've announced your name, you stand. Bobby Landers. Also, our inaugural city council members are Joe Harb, Bill Dable, Aldo Gridati, and Richard Hegi. I would also like to acknowledge subsequent mayors and council members, many of which are here today, who have served over the years for their endless hours of dedication and commitment to Arinda. And I do mean endless. Lynda Niebel, Joyce Hawkins. Joyce, please stand up. Greg Wheatland, Sarge Littlehale, Alan Tabore, Laura Abrams. Amy Worth. Bill Judge. Steve Closer, former Senator Closer here?
Yeah, okay.
Victoria Smith. C. Savison. Thomas McCormick, Dean Orr, Eve Phillips, Inga Miller, Dennis Fay, and Nick Cosla. And of course, last but very much not least, I want to thank and acknowledge our current former and future mayors and council members sitting up here with me. Darlene G., Vice Mayor Brandon Iverson, Janet Riley, and Cara Hoxey. Arinda, it has been said and can't be said enough, is a city that runs on volunteerism. So I also want to recognize, and I can't possibly list all of you, but I also want to recognize the many city volunteers that have served on the city's commissions and committees throughout the years and the dedicated service organizations that have put in tireless hours to make Arinda the wonderful place that it is. Many of you here, I recognize, have served us and thank you all. Specifically, I do want to recognize a couple of different organizations. I'd like to thank the Arinda Association, whose early existence and efforts gave birth to Arinda's incorporation and who have glazed our city with parades long before Arinda was born. I'd also like to express, okay, yes to Riley. I'd also like to express tremendous gratitude to Allison Burns and her team at the Arinda Historical Society for organizing an exhibit for today's event. And the panels outside really are incredible. So please do take a moment to enjoy their efforts during the ice cream social after the meeting. Next, we're honored to have our legislators here to present the city with various recognitions, followed by three distinguished former mayors who will speak briefly about the incorporation effort, about what being on the first city council was like, and about the progress that the city has made since incorporation. And with that, I would like to call on our legislators' offices to come up. We are really fortunate to have amazing relationships with our county, state, and federal electives here in Arinda. And so first, we will hear from Kaylee Deland, who's with Congressman DeSalle Nier's office.
Thank you so much for inviting me in our office to be here to celebrate Arinda's 40th anniversary with you today. From my experience working in this community, it's evident just how much each member of this community cares and how much each resident loves this city. Your passion for providing excellent education, protecting Arinda's open spaces, and preserving the city's history, and building a vibrant hub downtown are all a testament to what makes the city just so special. I truly admire the small-town feel and sense of community that I experience every time I'm here in Arinda. We're proud to have Arinda in our district and we're so excited to congratulate you on 40 years today. And we do also have a certificate from the congressman to celebrate this special occasion. So again, I want to thank you so much for inviting our office to be here and inviting me to celebrate this special day with you today.
Thank you. You want to do it now at the end? Huh? Okay, okay, we'll, should we do it at the end? Okay. Well, you're going to stay here? Okay, we'll do some photos at the end because I want to, I don't want to stand between this crowd and ice cream, so. Okay, and next, we are going to hear from our very own state senator, Senator Tim Grayson's office. And I know that unfortunately, I think he got held up in Sacramento. He was planning to be here, though he has graced us with his presence on a few occasions since taking office, for which we thank him. But we have Mike Sponsor, his district director, and Rachel Zinner, Senator Grayson's senior district rep, and also a resident of Arinda.
So I just want to say on behalf of Senator Grayson, he would want to flip that around and say that he was honored to be able to be here on the times that he has and he was truly planning on enjoying this moment with all of you and did get held up in Sacramento. On behalf of myself, I have only had the experience, the pleasure of working with many of you here in Arinda for a few brief moments of this year so far. But I will say that it is an amazing place to be a part of. It was very sad that we had to move our offices from Arinda because it was a true joy to be able to jump into the Senate right here in Arinda, right down the street. And so I want to thank the city of Arinda for all of its kindness and working with us so well. And I would also like to say that one of the best decisions on a district level that we have done is to hire an Arinda resident to be a part of our team. And we would not be the team that we are without Rachel Zinner. And we truly appreciate all of you and we congratulate the city of Arinda on his 40th. We do have a resolution and I will read just a few brief excerpts from it. "Whereas known for its beautiful setting, excellent schools, abundant cultural opportunities, and incredible access to the entire San Francisco Bay Area activities and attractions, the city of Arinda has earned a reputation as a desirable community in which to live, visit, and shop. Now therefore, be it resolved by Senator Timothy S. Grayson that he congratulate the people of the city of Arinda as they celebrate the 40th anniversary of its incorporation, count with immense pride to the many fine opportunities provided, to those individuals fortunate enough to call Arinda home and extend very best wishes for the city's continued prosperity in the many years to come. Congratulations on your 40th anniversary."
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, next, I think we are going to hear from Assemblymember Rebecca Barakahan's office. And I know that we are very grateful. She's been an Arinda resident. The Assemblywoman has been a huge supporter, so thank you for...
Yes, she's extremely disappointed not to be here. She's still up in Sacramento with Senator Grayson. In fact, I was up in, I barely made it here because we brought the interns up to Sacramento. So excuse me if I'm spitzing a little bit. But just we wanted to, I'm going to read a little bit of her remarks, but she really wanted me to express how proud she is to be an Arinda resident and how sorry she is to not be here, that she would be honored to be here to present this resolution herself. And I'm just going to read again a little bit of this beautiful resolution. "The city of Arinda is observing the 40th anniversary of its incorporation on July 1st, 2025. With a community reception and ice cream social hosted by the Arinda City Council and in recognitions of the city's progress and growth throughout the years, it is appropriate to extend to its residents the heartiest congratulations." Resolved by Assemblymember Rebecca Barakahan that she joins with the local residents and community leaders in celebrating the 40th anniversary of the incorporation of the city of Arinda and extends her best wishes that the city continues to prosper and thrive for many years to come. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we have our supervisor, Candace Anderson, who has had an amazing relationship with Arinda for years.
Good evening, everybody. It really is an honor to be here. And I've been reflecting on your 40th anniversary and how close it is to many cities in my district's anniversaries. Clearly, back in the 80s, you did not have a county supervisor who was doing the right thing. We had a meaty on our hands and most of the cities decided, hey, we need to annex, get de-annexed from the county. We need to create our own cities. And I really truly believe it was the best decision of all of our cities, whether it be Brawaga or Arinda, Banda and San Yon, because there, our cities have flourished and been able to take off. And it has truly been a privilege for me for the last 13 years to represent you as your county supervisor. Last week was my 13th anniversary of being sworn in as a county supervisor. And as I was reflecting...
Thank you.
As I was reflecting about Arinda, I just have always marveled about how hard everyone, from council members to community volunteers, work to make Arinda the outstanding community it is. There are so many wonderful committees out there working these grassroots efforts to truly ensure that everyone is welcome in Arinda. Everyone is safe in Arinda. And you've got some amazing roads. You've got a really wonderful downtown. And you're doing so much, particularly, I know, Otika's Bay has been doing such a great job working on the fire safety issues that concern so many of us. So it is my privilege, I do have a proclamation. I won't read the whole thing either, signed by the entire Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors, just talking about how in the 1920s, Arinda was a rural community, is a natural product of its topography and inaccessibility, the fog barrier created by the Berkeley Hills meeting an attractive summer destination. And then when the Broadway Tunnel, the Caldecott Tunnel was opened, it became a beautiful, accessible country environment in East Bay. And I will say that my father, who is 95, talked about how he had a classmate from one of the schools he attended who did have a home in Arinda and how in the 1940s, he came out here and said what an amazing, beautiful place it was. But then it would go on in this proclamation just acknowledging how the population of Arinda in 1985, you know, about 16,700, not that much different than today. A few thousand more, I think you're close to 19,500. And just the highly involved citizenry of Arinda. And so it was my pleasure to bring this forward to the Board of Supervisors, to have all of them sign this proclamation, recognizing what an amazing community you are here in Arinda. And I will do the photo op later. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Anderson. And I think I speak for all of us here and many of us in the audience who previously served on the council for your continued collaboration and support all these years. Well, that brings us to really the main event tonight, which is to hear comments by founders and former mayors. And I'm going to just give some brief introductions to our next three speakers. I could probably talk for hours if I were to give them a full introduction. So bear with us because we can't possibly say everything wonderful there is to be said to recognize these three. And I'm going to be very brief and reserve time for them. So first, we are going to hear from Joyce Hawkins. In 1983, former Mayor Hawkins was a leader in the initial incorporation committee called Citizens to Preserve Arinda. In 1992, she was elected to the Arinda City Council and served for three terms, or 12 years. And she was Arinda's mayor in 1994, 2000, and 2004. And Joyce will speak about what the incorporation effort was like. Following that, hold your applause for the next two intros. Again, I'll be brief. Following that, we're going to hear from Bobby Landers. In 1983, former Mayor Landers stepped down as the Arinda Association Coordinator to devote herself to the cause for incorporation of the city. In 1985, she was elected to the Arinda City Council as part of its inaugural council. She was the first woman elected to the Arinda City Council. Former Mayor Landers served for three terms and is mayor in 1988 and 1992. Mayor Landers will speak about what being on the first city council was like. Last, but most certainly not least, we will hear from Amy Worth. In 1998, Mayor Worth was elected to the Arinda City Council and served for 24 years. She served as mayor five times in 2001, 2005, 2013, 2018, and 2021. Her service has been the longest of any other, earning her the informal title "Our Forever Mayor." Amy will speak about how the city grew and changed in positive ways through the years and highlight some of our accomplishments as a city during the very long time she's served. And with that, Mayor Hawkins, please join us.
Thank you very much, city council members and mayor, for hosting this event. I think it's very wonderful. And it's wonderful to see so many colleagues from the days when we were fighting this battle and for those who served afterwards. And one, I'd like to, not someone involved in incorporation, but a former city manager is here, Janet Keeter. And I don't know how many of you know her, but would Janet just please stand up and say?
Please. It was a year of hard work, full-time devotion, ups, downs, false starts, new ideas, and ultimately, great joy. Nearly 200 volunteers joined forces to wage a campaign that had been kicking around since 1953, when the population was around 5,000 and phones still had rotary dials. In that year, the Arinda Association commissioned its first feasibility study and abided again in 1967, only to be met with a solid no from 70% of the voters. But the third effort succeeded with almost 60% voting in favor of Arinda becoming a city. The issue was always the same. And I have to say, I'm delighted to hear and see that it still is the same. It was all about local control. The 4Ps, as they were presented to the voters, police, planning, public works, parks and recreation, galvanized the community. Back then, only two officers from the sheriff's office were assigned to cover all of Arinda as well as Canyon. Planning was a county affair and necessitated midnight meetings and martinis for all of us. And our roads were held together by potholes and prayer. Theater Square was approved for the development of a five-story structure without the theater and its marquee, which for many Arindans was practically sacrilege. That's when Citizens to Preserve Arinda was born. Led by Jack Kinnable, Marion Odd, and Rose Trulli, we went grassroots before it was cool. Volunteers knocked on 5,600 doors and gathered 4,500 signatures, which were submitted to the Local Agency Formation Commission in February of 1984. One generous property owner offered us the use of his vacant storefront property across from the theater, our unofficial headquarters, and caffeine-fueled rail room. We produced a 17-minute promotional video for the new-fangled VCR machine. That today would seem primitive, but back then, it was peak innovation. would seem primitive, but back then, it was peak innovation. Credit for that goes to Rosalie Block's inspiration. The Fourth of July Parade had started the year before by the co-chairs of our PR committee, Bobby Landers, Dick Heggie, and Bill Gross, and it was there that we kicked off the campaign. It was old-school, community organizing at its finest: handshakes, house parties, coffee clutches, and enough wine tastings to keep spirits high. We shared the video, answered questions, and built a groundswell. Nineteen people ran for the inaugural city council, including Aldo Godati, who opposed incorporation, but wanted a seat at the table, just in case. One resident actually became a U.S. citizen 20 years after moving here from her native Canada, just so she could vote. Opposition groups leaned on fears of skyrocketing taxes, so we spent a lot of time gently walking fellow Arindans through how municipal funding in California actually works. There was no panic button, just patient education. And then, on March 5, 1985, in that humble, dusty campaign quarters, volunteers watched early returns trickle in on a tiny TV screen that turned into something extraordinary. Fears erupted, hugs were shared, and yes, tears flowed. Arinda was born.
Thank you so much, Mayor Hawkins.
I guess you understand why I was invited to speak tonight. Out of five elected council members, I'm the only one left. There are two things I'd like you to remember as the speech goes on. Probably too long, thank you. But then, is if you want to meet the best, the funnest, and the most interesting people in Arinda, you volunteer. That's what Arinda is all about, the volunteers. The second thing that you have to remember is, this was 40 years ago. So, things happened then that probably will never happen today, maybe. The election night was March 5, and as Joyce has pointed out, we all were in that little office that was in the incorporation office. And there was a white board set up, and as a result, Paul Glenn, we were cheering, and we were chatting while we were writing, we were all crowded in the room space. And the TV cameras, yes, we made the TV evening news, or maybe the morning news, when suddenly, a TV reporter put her microphone in my face, and she said, "How do you feel about the only woman elected to this council?" Well, I still have an equal vote. We knew that we would have a few weeks before we were officially a city. We didn't have to deal with a burnout. And someone suggested the country club for our first lunch meeting. I guess it was Aldo, because he was the only one of us that belonged to the club. The sun newspapers and the photographer to memorialize the date. We gathered for our picture. You here, you stand there, and Bill was so tall that we got a chill from him, and he said, "Oh, that's great, and Bobby, you can sit on my lap." Do you remember that this is 40 years ago? So, if I'm going to talk about the first council, who is mentioned, Dick, Joe, Bill, Aldo, and me, I worried, because I'm supposed to tell you about how that first council was. And I know that a full folks could possibly drop down from heaven and say, "She's not speaking for me." They'd be here. Aldo was the anti-incorporation candidate, and I assume the electorate decided we needed at least one opposition person on the board. So yes, of us didn't know what to expect from this rather grumpy, anti-incorporation man. Parking was a big deal for Aldo. He hated the bump out for a tree, but he was the most kindest and nicest man to work with. We were all really sorry when he didn't run for a second term. Dick Heggie, a born leader, that's much what you can say about him. He'd lived all over the world after his Cal Berkeley graduation, although he grew up in Berkeley. He always seemed to be the kind of person you look to for leadership. Arinda made him the top vote getter, and therefore, our first mayor, and rightly so. Joe Harb was every organization's treasurer. He knew the numbers. His business was finance. I think he enjoyed being on the council as... When he retired from the council, he married a member from the staff. Joe Bebl was very tall. I think probably six foot seven, I didn't authenticate that, but I think that's pretty close. He worked for Berkeley Public Works, and he was the inventor of those small, one-way streets with the stop signs that were famous in Berkeley. And he was very proud of making Berkeley residents happy. I had been the paid administrator for the Arinda Association. I represented the Arinda Association, therefore, the city at county supervisors' meetings, water and power boards, anything where I needed to have done to represent Arinda, especially during the day. I staffed the little office tucked behind the community center from 10 a.m. to noon Monday through Friday. I registered Arinda complaints, and we were the quasi-government for Arinda, and that's how everyone saw us. By the way, Steve Olson and Ted Urban, Arinda's famed architect, spent a week cutting in a big window and installing shelves and making the tiny, formal prop room a wonderful, locable office for the Arinda Association and me. We incorporated, as Joyce has pointed out, the 4Ps, police, planning, parks, recreation, and public works. Although we were politically a mixed bag from different sides of the aisle, we were pretty conservative. We never allowed ourselves to wander from the 4Ps. We had hired a recently-retired city manager from Oakland to be our interim city manager, and he hired our famous Nancy Anderson, who stayed with the city until she retired many years later. So the search for a permanent city manager immediately moved forward. We went through about 20 resumes, all very promising, and finally, one stood out, but I think we personally interviewed at least five. Aldo Leonard, an older, about-to-retire city manager with plenty of experience. I led a younger upstart with lots of enthusiastic ambition to make Arinda the best city ever. Happily, we made one of our decisions ever, one of our best decisions ever, by hiring Tom Sinclair. He's now living up in Auburn, and I invited him here today, but other family prevented him from coming. And he's just become, for the second time, a grandfather, and he sent his best wishes and says hello to all the friends that they made here in Arinda. In those first few meetings, we decided on Tuesday. Everyone else in the neighborhood met on Wednesday evenings, so we decided on Tuesdays. We held a contest for the city logo, and decided our colors would be blue and white, the same as Mill Valley High School. We decided to take up the sheriff's contract with two officers daily. Imagine, we used to have one officer drive through once daily. Now we had a chief and two officers, who often, if one often offended us, he would immediately be replaced. And that's still the best deal for us going. Tom hired Wayne Raspason as planning director, an outstanding city planner. We dusted out another room closet in the community center, and they shared that office, Tom and Wayne. Wayne would open his bottom desk drawer and talk on the phone inside the drawer. Remember, it was 40 years ago. Tom worked out a yearly budget, and we all met in a small meeting room to hear about it. As the meeting progressed, Joe, who was sitting next to me, leaned over and said, "It's okay, Bobby, I'll take some time at the end of the meeting, and I'll explain it all to you."
Oh, wow.
Remember, it's 40 years ago.
Forty years ago.
Theater Square was early on our docket, and we landmarked the Arinda Adobe and the East Bay Water Plant. We came out very well in the 89 earthquake and the Oakland Hills fire. Gateway was late in our second term, and some of us were never on the council for the final approvals. Steve Bennett had a photographer shop in Arinda. He stopped and proposed to take all our pictures as portraits, and that was a habit we hoped would be maintained. And there's another long story to that. When each of us became mayor, we gave a party at our homes for our supporters and friends to celebrate with us. Tom made up a baseball team from our staff, and we all watched on summer afternoons on Red Bull Ranch. What a great time we all had. I started by saying Arinda is a volunteer community. I'm going to read you a list of some of the outstanding folks who have come before you as they were instrumental in making Arinda the wonderful city it is today. I didn't do a special order. I asked people who I knew had been here almost as long as I have, and we made up a list. And why did we do that? Because one person can't do this kind of a job by themselves. We need everyone helping us, and we need all those volunteers. And we have a whole new city council, and they can nod that they didn't get there individually all by themselves. They had lots of supporters, friends, relatives, that helped them get there and helped them do the job that they're doing now. So I'd like to read that list, but I ask you to give me a pause, because I have to run and get my glasses, okay? When you write things too small. So, bear with me, because it's important that you know these great names that worked hard in this town before we became a city. People like John Faisal, who's our trails guy. Ann Kristofferson, I'd hoped she would come today, but she was the maneuver shaker behind the community center that we all love. Mitch Ziski worked for the schools and the city. And of course, Joyce and Marion... And Jane Putnam, who's a sun reporter, but she gathered us together and started the Arinda Historical Society. Rosalie Block, Pierce McKee, Mike Helen. Mike conceived and wrote the first regency ordinance for the county, so we would have that in place. He retired and moved to Jackson Hole, and when I saw him a couple years ago, he said... he said, "Oh, yeah, I'm retired. I'm going to start this little boutique lawyer agency." It's now a multi-martial legal agency. That's Mike. Jane Norley, one of our planners. Pat Dinklespiel. Janet Pereira. Great old man, school board and started the original bookstore independent. Oh, God, stuff she did. Ted Urban, thank you Ted, and Dave Olson. Jim Lubin on the committee, Joyce and we remember. Jim Lucas, Sarge Littlehill, Bill Gross, Carolyn and Bob Mills. I see Carolyn's here tonight. Lily Vuggelson. Helene Frakes. Jerry Tyson. Jack and Linda Knigel. And I finally got a chance to remember his name because for years I could have remembered the name of a young man who had a foundry in Berkeley and was so enthusiastic about incorporation that the final meeting of the incorporation board or committee, he laid these keys, one for each of us. And so I know there are a bunch of them floating around Arinda somewhere. I hope one ends up in the Historical Society. But for sure, this one, which is mine and has my name on it, will end up with my kids. So his name, Tom Bishop. Just out of the blue, he wanted to be part of the incorporation effort. And those are the kind of volunteers that are historic in Arinda. So tonight, I'm going to pull out one more. You know, I've been very active in the Cecil City. Then when we had this association with Tabor in the Czech Republic and we bring a student here every fall for the fall/winter semester at Millamlee. And lately, it's been harder and harder to get some of you to volunteer to be a host family. So we were bringing a young man over last year. And I got a phone call. And she said, "I want to be the host family." And I said, "Well, why don't you be a host family?" "Well, I really want to be a host family to that young man. It's going to be so fun." I said, "But you're getting off the school board and you're running a campaign for the council. And you've got a family. And you're already boarding another kid from a friend. I mean, you don't have any time." Call a hoxie. So I think I'm preaching to the wrong people. I mean, the really busy people. And you're a volunteer, I know. But the rest of you, get on board. It's lots of us. And I talked to my sister today. And I said, "I got this little speech to me." She said, "Bobby, remember the important words." And I said, "What's that?" And she said, "Thank you for coming. Good night."
Thank you so very much, Mayor Landers. And now we'll hand it over to Father Mayor Amy Wirth.
Thank you. Well, wishful, these two women are really tough act to follow. You know, I always called them the big kids. And I was a little kid in, as in a Arindish circles, particularly when it started incorporation. And we are so fortunate that they both devoted their lives to incorporating the city and the legacy that they have. I also want to thank our county, state, and federal representatives that are here with us tonight. You know, one of the great joys for Arinda has been the close relationship over the decades working with government agencies. And I have a feeling that if Candace were our supervisor at the time, we might not want to incorporate. But the, 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 but anyway, you know, walking through the community center the other day, picking up my two grandsons from camp, I was really one-minded of all the people who have devoted so many decades and years to serving our community in so many ways. And in many of the, in Mirasorix's book on the history of Arinda, you know, it's really a story of people. It's a people that gave to this community and made it what it is today. And many of those efforts way long before incorporation and really built an opportunity for the community to incorporate. And as local government evolved around us, it was absolutely vital that Arinda incorporate when we did. And as Joyce mentioned, 1953 was the first study and it took a long time to do it. But as I think about describing sort of what has happened after incorporation, it's a little bit like the film It's a Wonderful Life. You know, do you tell what we did or do you imagine what it would be like had we not incorporated? And I, and I think of all the things in Arinda that have happened because of incorporation. And first of all, Joyce mentioned, you know, explained to people the finances of government services. And of course, Dean Lester was also someone who was worried about the taxes. Well, of course, Arinda has been able to be a very successful city on a very frugal budget. And the taxes that we put in place were a share that we got from the property taxes already been paid, but also local taxes that voters passed because they knew the money would be raised in Arinda and it would stay in Arinda. And I, and I learned so much. I remember when I first got elected, having breakfast at Joyce Hawkins' house. And she said, "Okay, I got two messages for you. First of all, you're just one person in a council of five. Our council works together as a group of five people and cohesively. And that's been a tremendous tradition in our councils over the decades." But second of all, she just said, "You remember, we have no money." So Arinda historically has been very frugal. And at times when cities are in real crisis, financial crisis, Arinda's able to weather the storm and make it through. And I remember during the, one of the dot-com busts, Victoria was talking to our city manager and said, "Call, call the county assessor. What's our number? What's our actual number going to be next month?" And we called Comcast and said, "What are those franchise fees? What are they looking at?" And we were counting every, every single, every single penny. But internally, one of the great benefits of incorporation was we became a government for the people and by the people. And residents were able to come down to Arinda to meet, come to city council meetings or meet with city staff rather than having to go all the way out to Martinez. Community volunteering have always been a hallmark of Arinda. And incorporation offered the ability today and since incorporation for about 50 volunteers a year to participate in our local government, council, committees and commissions and appointees. And it's a wonderful, wonderful way to illustrate the community commitment to our, to our city. And city partnerships with local community groups have always been a hallmark of our, of our volunteer community. And many of those organizations preceded incorporation and worked to help with incorporation. And a reminder of that is every month, the mayor's liaison meeting is a wonderful highlight to remind us of the tremendous community groups that are working so hard for our community. Incorporation also enabled us to have a phenomenal city staff that devote all their time and energy to making Arinda a great place. And had we not incorporated, we would not, we would not have this. So Joyce and Bobby both talked about the four Ps. So the message was stick to the four Ps. We expanded them a little bit, but we really stuck to the four Ps. So first of all, in terms of parks, we were able to expand the parks. We were able to build playfields, enhance the sports field, and renovate the community center and all the wonderful programs that are here today. Every day you come, you see kids of all ages, people of all ages enjoying this wonderful community center. Planning. Local land use really was the driving force for Arinda's incorporation. And through that, we were able to have our own decisions with regards to planning and land use. Design review was important to our community. Downtown revitalization and local residents participating in the planning discussions and planning decisions. We were also able to save the Arinda Theater, which has been an iconic landmark for our community. And those of you may have seen the big story that was in the paper a couple of weeks ago featuring the Arinda Theater. Public safety. As Joyce mentioned, originally, public safety, we had, we had two officers that would come around occasionally going on all of our streets. And it was really important. And so the wisdom of that early council was to have a sheriff's contract, which has made a huge difference. It's wonderful police service. And it is, we were so lucky. The other thing is the partnership with the fire district, which has also so enhanced our public safety. And in today's world, talking about wildfire, our fire district was really on the forefront of this, helping our residents create a safer environment. Public works. When Arinda incorporated, there's a big joke. It says, "Those county public works people" just laughed and they said, "We are so glad to get rid of this town and all of its potholes." But you know what the truth is? Is that Arinda residents became in charge of the streets and roads. And they went from being the worst in the Bay Area to the very best in the Bay Area. And that was a tremendous accomplishment by our staff, our volunteers, and our Arinda voters. So in terms of external things, what Arinda did, what the incorporation did, is enable the city to advocate outside of Arinda to develop a strong partnership with the city, with the schools. And I remember once when we started the, including creating the La Marinda School Bus Program. And I remember one year, we were worried about the traffic at OIS. So we needed a place for those buses to turn out. Well, Sue Seabirdson got on the phone and she called Dick Rainey. So take note of this, all of you in Sacramento. I know there's no money right now. But saying, "We need a turnout." Dick came up with the money and the city designed the turnout to provide a safe place for the school buses to pick up kids every day. We also had a really important voice in representing the citizens of Arinda, advocating for Arinda in county, regional, state, and federal activities. And that was so important and have a voice in the regional agencies like the Transportation Authority, Solid Waste Authority, which Laura Abrams helped create. And it was an agency that took, played a leading role in sustainability in our county. And state recycling laws are modeled after what the Solid Waste Authority developed in La Marinda and in central Contra Costa County. We were also active and represented Arinda's interests in collaboration with a lot of other communities at the Association of Bay Area Government. So being incorporated, Arinda was really, was vital to Arinda's future and its, and its success. And of course, you know, I'm not biased. But I will say, one of the greatest accomplishments of the city of Arinda is this library and the auditorium. And and you know, I remember one of the first meetings that the Friends of the Library had, that we had with the city. We sat down in the library with Mayor Higgy and we said, "Oh, we need a new roof." And they found the money to support the library. But you know, it was a, and we never would have been able to build the library and the gym and the senior, Monteverde senior housing without local development fees that historically, had we not been incorporated, they would have left Arinda. They would have gone to other places in Contra Costa County. And those were vital funds to do these projects. Finally, we were able to build for the third tunnel through those mountains. And I remember it was so exciting the day that we dedicated it. Now, I got to say, I think we were quite at the level of the 1937 tunnel dedication because they had Franklin Delano Roosevelt. But we, we, you know, it was an exciting thing. But finally, I just wanted to close with, and thank Alison Burns for all of her work in helping us remember our community and being reminded. And in the article she wrote for the Arinda News, she closed with one of the songs from the incorporation drive. And it was Chuck White wrote, the Arinda Fight Song. And it was, "From the halls of Millamlee to the shores of Lake Cascade, we will fight for preservation of this town we won't let fade." So I would add that incorporation really delivered that promise. And collectively, through our government, through the volunteer efforts of all the members of our community, we continue to make Arinda a wonderful place. And the generations that follow will also hold up that commitment to the people of Arinda. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I want, next on our agenda is the presentation of our city proclamation. But before we do that, I wanted to thank and acknowledge a few other people because we've been talking a lot about those of us who have served on the council. But what we know is, as you've heard about the four Ps, it is our staff here that perform the daily magic that brings four Ps to life. And so I wanted to just acknowledge a few people on behalf of the full council tonight who have made tonight happen and who have worked for years. So first of all, and I'm just going to announce these names and then please hold your applause till the end. But our city clerk, Sherri Smith, has organized tonight's event together with our city manager, Linda Smith, and other staff. I want to also acknowledge our acting city manager, Doug Alessio, and our city attorney, Elsa Wolf. And I would like all of you, and I also believe we have a form, we have one former city manager, Janet Keeter. And so I would like all of you as well as all of Arinda's staff to please stand and let's give them a round of applause. And with that, next on our agenda is our proclamation and which we have. And then I also wanted to give my fellow council members and vice mayor an opportunity to say any words if they wanted to, which is not required since right now, ice cream is waiting. But ice cream's waiting. Okay.
Let's do, let's do comments first, if you'd like. Want me to start?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you all.[1757.15]
Well, thank you all. It's so nice to see so many important former mayors, former people of Arinda all together to celebrate the 40th anniversary. Forty years ago, I was in law school, my first year of law school, but I remember my mother hosting coffee clutches and helping with the incorporation. Having grown up here in Arinda, as a child, you didn't really think about the city government, but listening to the names that Bobby Landers read, many of them were like, Janet Berlato was my Girl Scout leader. Many of the people who were involved in our community were on your list and I remember them very fondly from my childhood growing up in Arinda. And I am so honored to be here as a member of the council to serve the city that I grew up in. And it's so great to be celebrating with all of you tonight. So thank you and thank the city for putting all of this together for us. It's, it's really a wonderful place and it's a wonderful place to call home. Thank you, council member Hoxie.
I certainly agree. It's so nice to see all of you here tonight. Bobby, I think you did start something. I seem to notice that there are a lot of women up here tonight. We don't have anybody to explain it to us. We have to figure it out ourselves. But it is such a pleasure. I missed all of the incredible effort directly in the incorporation because my husband and I moved to Arinda in 1989, but we have been here and intend to stay here ever since. It is just a lovely, beautiful community. Like many of you here in this room, we raised our family here. I think we all know what a special place it is and certainly looking at the faces here tonight, we know how much has been accomplished out of the incredible volunteerism that goes on in the community. So I'm extremely proud to be sitting up here. Thank all of you for the support over the years and I am very, very proud of Arinda. I think we have so much to point to in terms of being such a well-run city. It's one of the first things I always share with people that don't know a lot about our city government is that we are an incredibly well-run operation, both at our level up here and our incredible staff. So we have a lot to be proud of tonight.
Thank you.
I would just.
Go ahead.
I have nothing to add other than it's just such a joy listening to and learning from all of you in the audience, those that spoke and as we look forward to speaking to out there. It's, it's really an honor to get to know you all.
I too grew up in Arinda and I know a lot of those names and a lot of the people in this room. And I remember my parents being very actively involved in talking about incorporation for decades before 1985. And they were very, very pleased with the results and excited about it. And I'm glad I'm here to also celebrate. And I, I want to say that, you know, so many things happen in life and you just kind of pass, let them pass. And it's so wonderful. We're celebrating, we're stopping and saying, this is a moment, this is special. And I'm really glad we did it. We debated, should we wait till 50? And I said, well, I might not be here, but let's do it now.
Thank you all. And I said enough, so I don't want to belabor, but I just want to thank again our, our staff, my fellow council members, all former council members, and all of the volunteers and residents in Arinda for making this such a, a place that, that is welcoming, that is inclusive, that is civil. We don't always agree on everything, but boy, do we relate to each other nicely and kindly. And right now, that's a very special thing to say about where we live. And with that, let's turn to our proclamation. And I will get us started. We have a proclamation recognizing the city of Arinda on the occasion of its 40th anniversary of incorporation, 1985 to 2025. Whereas Arinda celebrates its ruby jubilee with joy and grateful appreciation to the city's founders and many citizen volunteers and.
Whereas voters approved making Arinda a city in March 1985 with an inaugural incorporation ceremony on July 1st, 1985. And whereas the city's journey to incorporation was long and challenging, since the 1940s, the Arinda Association provided a quasi-governmental structure, laying the foundation for the community we cherish today. And.
And whereas after two unsuccessful attempts to incorporate in 1953 and 1967, the citizens to preserve Arinda was formed in 1983 and its members contributed a year and a half of their lives towards the successful campaign and vote which led to incorporation. And whereas local control and improving the quality of life in Arinda was the impetus for incorporation and.
Whereas over the years, citizen involvement and their generous contributions of time, talent, and resources have improved the quality of life for all Arindans. And whereas the city of Arinda continues to be committed to creating a high quality of life for its citizens through excellent services and programs while being fiduciarily responsible with public funds. And. Whereas Arinda continues to make a mark on the region with the beautifully restored Art Deco Arinda Theater and popular community center and public library in the center of town. And whereas Arinda's beauty, excellent schools, culture, and the proximity of the San Francisco and the Bay Area make Arinda a delightful place in which to live and visit. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Arinda does hereby acknowledge and thank those involved in the incorporation effort, the city's founders and subsequent council members and mayors, and the many citizen volunteers throughout the years for their outstanding and lasting contribution to the beautiful city of Arinda. And if you have served on a committee or commission or the council now, please stand up. Okay, we have one more item on our agenda. Remember, this is between us and ice cream. But with that, I do want to give anyone an opportunity to make public comment. So I will now call public comment. I don't know if we have any speaker cards? Madam Clerk? Okay, we do not. If anyone would like to make public comment, public comment is limited to three minutes. Okay. Hearing none, I will close public comment. And with that, we will adjourn to our ice cream social.